I told me in order. For the allegiance.
Of the United States of America. Into the Republic or Witch of Sands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Yeah.
Says. Says we didn't know. You are muted.
I'll do that one too, I guess, but it says it's on the green down here, so. Justin's in there, it looks like.
Can you hear us, Justin?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep. Okay. Um, first we got the highway annual financial report.
Brought two copies and say so my clean can have a copy.
I I printed out your copy.
Like, I got two copies right here for him, I'll just give you one.
So I've read through this report. I'm sure this means something to you guys, there were a lot of numbers plugged in here. They don't mean anything to me.
So all those numbers come from.
Okay.
Our revenue, our disbursements. Um, we have to file this. When M V H restriction was created. They also created basically transferring this, your financial information over to this annual financial report that we turn in to be eligible for grants. But. There's no, um. I mean. Just not that I know of, there's no repercussions if a number was missed or something.
Well, I got my quad meeting last Thursday, they said if this isn't turned in by June first, she won't get her M V H money.
I think she mentioned it at the last meeting.
Then somebody told me June six and it's actually June first.
I. Thought this was just mainly so you could do the. Uh. Get the extra funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really nothing.
What's the matter?
Video picture.
No video?
Okay. It's awesome.
So who plugs these numbers into this spreadsheet?
Uh, Jessica and myself. And then I can review this.
Based on numbers out of those reports. So how do we know that this is accurate other than just going by what? You folks did out at the highway?
Uh, that's why I asked Michael to send you the these reports last week, so you can kind of compare it. But it is hard for you to look through there because you don't know what, I mean, it's broken up into several several different areas.
Right, I don't know how those numbers were driven into this, so that'd be hard unless we sat down line by line. For me to understand where these numbers are coming from.
Did you not get the reports I sent?
It, oh, okay, she has them right here as well, but again.
Was that an explosion? No, it wasn't.
Like working on a wall.
You okay, Charlie?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, what have you guys done in the past on this? I mean, I hate to be the guy that brings up questions, but. This could all be nonsense as far as I know.
All right, well, we got pretty much gotta take their word for it, the three of them that put it in, I know it's what we're signing for. And really, ain't this the new thing?
Uh, so it's N B A restricted, so like twenty twenty-ish.
Yeah.
But she turns in claims and we review them, so it's it's got the internal controls going. Plus after. We review them, Teresa reviews them again, so.
But Teresa doesn't review this.
Not her report, no.
Sorry.
You're better fine, I'm just saying that. We're taking their word for whatever they're putting in, even though it's on the claim, if it's not put in there right.
So what have you guys done in the past, just signed it without?
I believe so, without, I mean, going through it and then like my plane said to our plane.
Mm-hmm.
Which is have time is hard to. Figure out. Right? And not against the highway, just all fine.
Yeah, budgeting stuff is complex.
So really, the only ones names that are on it is Rachel's and ours.
Yeah.
I mean, Charlie, do you have a good understanding of all this, all these numbers are plugged in?
Yeah. Let us say no, I mean. It's, we've done it before, but I mean, it's just. What they provide. I mean, I feel confident in their work they do with it, so.
That's how I am, I mean, because they everybody's. But I mean, we're going by the pay details, even when we go through the claim, we'll do what these people provide us with.
Well, the claims though, we can check for the receipts.
Right.
You know, and verify what it is, which I've done with the other multiple times. But you know, like this here. None of us know if any of these numbers are even remotely accurate. Is. For in future, is there any way that? This stuff can be broken down? So we have a better understanding, I'm not saying this because this is urgent.
Right.
But for next year, can this be broken down, so?
I can, if you want to come out and have a meeting with me, I can teach you how to read those reports and how you compare it to what's in here.
I think that might be good. Yeah.
It's, it looks complex, but it is fairly simple.
Well, I'm sure it is, but again, I don't know how those numbers are driven into this report.
There's not anything really I could break down more, but I can at least. Teach you how to structure what that is saying compared to these reports.
I wonder if that would qualify for. A, um. An executive meeting. Where she could come in and explain to all three of us how she's coming up with these numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be possible, Justin, for next year?
Um, since it's budgetary, I don't know if it qualifies for an executive, um. I mean, you can always just schedule a regular work session open to the public, I mean, it may move the public to kind of hear how that works too. Not that they'll be incredibly interested, but yeah, usually usually budgetary items, like when they do budget workshops in June are 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 open to the public specifically since they're monetary.
How much time do you think it would take you or one of your gals to come in and? Step us through it, I mean, would that be like a thirty minute thing or?
A couple hours.
Couple hours?
Hmm.
So the public really wouldn't want to.
Right.
Sit in and listen to all that, but it could be open to the public, I guess.
Yeah, if they want to.
I just have a hard time. Signing something that I don't know how those numbers were driven.
Right.
What you want to do, Charlie? I'm gonna forward both. And we kind of have to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. Like I said, I got faith in what they do with the numbers and. Obviously, they don't want to do them wrong, so make sure it's right.
Well. I don't have faith in people as far as. You know, and I'm not picking on her crew, but people make mistakes all the time, our names are on it, you know, that means that we agreed to it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't have a problem with signing it this year, but you know, next year I I would feel like we need to know more. About what's happening, uh, if we're putting our names on documents like, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, that's something we can move forward to next year, for next year.
So we want to make a motion then to?
I'm making a motion, we'll move forward, go ahead and sign it this year, but fix it separate, different from next year.
Yeah, a little bit more knowledge about what we're doing. Okay, now I'll second that.
We had a motion to second all those in favor.
Um.
Okay, did you want to, did you need to bring up anything about this? Your, that grant that you applied for, for the mammoth?
No.
Oh, you got one too, I brought it just in case.
Yeah, no, no, they're just waiting on their signatures for that. They already approved all that.
Michael, Michaeline, are you talking about the clean version that I emailed over to you?
No, no, the grant that she applied for, they've got the clean version you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sending. Are you done?
I know, I know.
Oh, you have a signed copy for me that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, yeah, thank you, we can have one of these signed copies.
Bro.
You need an eight cents?
No, it's not right because it's yellow.
Oh, well, right on the.
Michael, if you want to file this with that report, it was that is with your files as far as where we got those numbers from, so.
Okay, you guys, um. Have the total response dispatch software contract till today, who have a copy of that?
Am I done?
Yes.
I think so, thanks, thank you, Rachel.
I don't think anybody got it, if I remember right, that was just to make sure the council approved. The dispatch.
Um, yes, I believe that's right.
So you guys already signed it?
I don't know if we signed, I don't remember if we signed it or not, we approved it at the last meeting.
Okay, well.
Depending on the council.
I don't think they, I don't think they signed it, Michaeline, they wanted me to take a look at the service agreement, it's called an implementation service agreement, I looked it over, I was provided a copy by the sheriff's department. I mean, it looks straightforward as long as they. You know, I I can't. I can't say, hey, the the amount is, I mean, it's the amount we talked about, but. Um. Yeah, the amount that they're contracting for is within their wheelhouse, but.
We talked about that that night.
And we were waiting on them to review them. So I don't know.
The council approved it and it's going to be on their additionals for next month if you guys sign the contract.
We we did not sign the contract.
Okay, I said if you guys sign the contract.
Do you have the contract?
No, she didn't leave it with me. I don't have it.
Well, I'm pretty sure the council signed it that night, didn't they?
They didn't sign the contract because you guys have to sign the contract, they approved me to go forward with the additional appropriation.
Okay.
So, so we need that signed today or?
I don't, I don't have it, you might have to call Stacy to bring it to you.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it's got to be done today, we could, I could call her, she's working, I could get her to run it over.
Okay, I don't know if it has to be done today, but I think she wanted it right away, so.
You did have that out of jail seat, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that corrected in the counseling, okay. You got a, I'll call them.
Okay.
And then the next thing was the mammoth road agreement while you're waiting for Stacy.
And I'm a. I'd make a motion to approve the mammoth agreement as written, I was like.
Yeah, a motion and a second on the mammoth road agreement. Polls in favor?
Aye.
The next thing is the true role contract.
Thank you, are you working? Your contract that you have for the new stuff for the nine one one? Do you got the copy of that? Okay, we we have to sign it and that's what we're up here to special meeting. Um. Is there any way we could get a copy or we could sign it today? Okay, thank you. Yep.
She bringing it over?
Yep.
Okay, good. Then that that true role contract that you guys have a chance to check that out, I sent you what was received and I. Thought it had been there longer, it just started in March of twenty four and we collected like seventy some thousand dollars just since March. Of seventy four, that's just in March seventy four, March of. Twenty four, and that was just the amount that was up until December third and first. So.
So. They've. Gone from doing it at basically no cost.
Well, they got a percentage.
Percentage to now there's a flat fee per year.
Yeah.
And I'm Charlie, I'm not sure you were aware of that.
No.
It's eleven thousand, I think five hundred dollars, does that kind of sound right?
Yes.
A year, a year.
Eleven thousand five hundred a year.
And what we're doing, I'm paying out to.
No, it was a percentage, yeah.
Percent.
How much was their percentage last year?
Thirty percent.
Which totaled?
It was a hundred and some thousand that we got. And they got, and so there was seventy thousand, what, seventy seven thousand, I think it was left over after they got their percentage. That was what we got was the seventy seven thousand.
They got thirty percent of a hundred thousand.
Hundred and some thousand, yeah.
So this year may be potentially less, no, there's, they don't get any other. Percentages.
No, they'll just get this flat fee and that's it.
Do you have that paperwork?
Mm-hmm.
Justin, did you have a chance to read over that by chance?
Yeah, I mean, the agreement itself, I don't have, I have the the project phase two breakdown that describes the implementation of the setup and the configuration and everything. Um, if there's another like terms and service agreement, I I don't have that where you actually put your signature on it, um. I think, and I know we've had success with this in the past, the issue is that they're a business just like any other, I find it hard to believe a business is going to go from collecting thirty grand to saying. You know, we'll only take a third of that if they don't think that. They have an incentive to. To decrease their own share, but I mean, that that's your guys' call, I just. Yeah.
Is that what we hit?
There's, Michael, there's no contract for this?
Yeah, you sign at the bottom there if you approve it, yeah, yeah.
Well, there's.
I thought I gave you guys all copies of this last time.
Yeah.
Oh.
Charlie wasn't.
Yeah.
But there's not a lot of information here, is there?
No.
I get, my only concern would be there, they don't have the expectation that we're going to pay the eleven five plus a percentage.
No, absolutely, they said it's a flat fee, that would be it.
Yeah, it just doesn't explicitly say.
Yeah. I don't want it to be a catch and say.
Yeah, but it's not a lot here to. Have you been working with them, Michael?
No, Suzanne, do you want Suzanne to come down here?
If you don't want.
No, I don't mind at all, she said she was willing to come down, because she has been working with them all along since it first started.
Just normally our contracts have a little bit more detail to them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Suzanne's been working with them since it started last year, so.
She may be watching, she may be on her way down here already.
I'm sorry, what?
She might be watching the.
We'll have to call her.
Think I hear.
I think I heard her too.
Yep.
There she is, didn't have to call her, I realized watching the meeting. Okay. What was the questions?
Well, this is pretty vague, um.
Trying to think if he actually. Yeah. Basically, they're switching up how they did it, and this was our plan all along. When we first set up with them, we actually met them, I think, at an auditors conference. We used to do this back when she was here, the first time, collected a lot of money. So we thought we'd give it a try, um. The reason they did it that way they did the first time with the thirty percent commission was that way we didn't have to sign a contract. Rachel looked into it at the time, you know, she was auditor. If we were only paying the money out of proceeds, she didn't have to have commissioner approval. So we wanted to see how it was going to go. Um, so that's why we did it that way. Now we've, like they, we sent them their file, but we did a big project, like it was a lot. Went through them all. Got to the point where there weren't really any new ones. So now what they're going to do is for one year. And I've already seen the system, it's still in there, there's a lot in there. What's in there will probably more than pay for this. Um, but they're doing it this way since we've already done the main project. Odds are, and I just love to see what we paid them, that's.
Oh, what?
What we paid them. I want to say it was like sixteen grand. But that was for a lot more. Instances than there would be this time, so this is kind of why they're doing it this way. Then if once. Me or Teresa, whoever goes through them. If it's looking like, okay, we're not going to be able to give you that much more. Then next year we possibly just wouldn't do it for another year, let them build up again. So it's more that there's a lot in there, um, we'll probably end up making more than the eleven five. Easy. Um. And so then we're going to do it this way for one year, and then the next year they'll reexamine the situation, like what they've got.
Yeah.
Um, not, we were the first county in Indiana to do it.
Right.
Some others have started to sign up, but. And like I was telling her, not only did we make.
I think that was seventy seventy three thousand.
Okay, but it's, I thought it was.
That's for who I built, who I back built. We probably, I probably removed fifty. Homesteads. Going forward, that we've also recaptured that money. Um, because it did, it became a big issue, I've reached out to the city of Knox, I don't know how many times. Hey, can I get a list of your renters? Because if there's a renter in that house, then that means if somebody's there claiming the homestead. They shouldn't be getting it. Never, they've never cooperated. Like, that's your tax money. Um. And then like I said, it all goes into that one fund. I C code wise. The auditor's office can, it's kind of like Mandy's fund, the auditor's office can do whatever they want with that money. And we did appropriate ten thousand, but you know, their contract's eleven five. And they even said they'd split it up into two payments. Like it doesn't have to be eleven five day one.
I think our biggest concern was make sure we weren't going to get a percentage charge in the eleven.
No, no, that's, they're they're stepping away from that because then they also have to send us a bill every month this way, they bill, I've got all the records. We don't have to keep, and we were paying them about once a month there for a while, you know, we have plenty coming in. Then if somebody doesn't pay, if I send them a back bill and it's for three years. I mean, some of these were five grand. Um, I can then put it on their taxes. So then if they don't pay that, they get that ten percent penalty and then they can end up going to tax it all for it. But I ended up with only. One person that didn't pay. Directly.
So. Um, will this have to go to council? Because we're at eleven five.
Just the fifteen hundred.
Just the fifteen hundred? Or would it not need to go to council if it's only fifteen hundred?
I think it still would, it'd have to be.
If it comes out, keep capital.
Right.
Well, it won't come out of cum cap, it'd come out of that, that fund.
Okay. Probably won't hurt you, let it go. You know, I mean, it's so everything legit, but.
So I'll make a motion to approve pending council approval.
Second.
We had a motion and a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, have you decided on the congressional school?
Did you get a chance to look into that, Justin?
I did, so. This is what you call an educational fiduciary fund. Um, there is actually a code section, and I did not catch it the first time. Because it is a, so basically how it's structured is. The county by statute administers this fund. Now, the county, when this was set up years ago, could have passed a resolution to transfer custody of fund balance to the state, but the county at that time, and that. This has probably been in place for years in Stark County. But the county, at the time they adopted it, chose to be the fiduciary and manage this fund. Um, so sources of the fund, it's like, it's derived from the sale of congressional township school lands. So again, it's probably been administered by the county for a long time, and by statute. We are a lot, since we've chosen to retain the fiduciary responsibility for this fund. Um, we're liable for the preservation of the part of the fund that's entrusted to us, so we have to keep. The same, and this is why, you remember Michaeline said it's had the same balance for years, that's because by statute, um. Aside from the interest that is paid over, uh, we have to keep the same account balance every year, the minimum principal amount. Um. And the cat, so, and then under statutes, the county auditor of each county semi-annually. Uh, makes a portion of the amount, uh, of these congressional township school revenue bond each school corporation. Um. So again, we keep that minimum balance, the original principal amount administered fund, um, because there is a minimum balance requirement. So again, this is something statutorily, since we didn't, since the commissioners way back when decided not to transfer. Administration to the state, we manage it at the county level. We have, we have to pass it, we don't have a choice, I mean, we have to approve it, and we keep that same minimum balance in the account with interest payable. Um, out of that fund balance, uh, as it accrues, so I know that's probably not.
And there's a separate fund for the interest.
Okay, yeah, that that would make sense then, if there's a separate fund, that's just. So a- as the interest accrues, Michaeline, you're saying that it automatically accrues in that in that other fund, and then it's.
Right, it's all automatically deposited into the congressional school principal, I mean, interest fund. And this is progressive school, and I started in nineteen eighty four, and it was. Being done then, so it started before my time in eighty four.
Yeah.
I filled it out all them years ago, every year, same amount of money.
So we need a motion to approve?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh congressional school report fund, so that can.
We had a motion in a second, all's in favor.
Okay, do you have, did I hand that to you? And I attached the uh. Ledger that shows what the balance is, if you guys want to look at it, make sure the stats correct.
Thanks for looking into that, Justin.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I wasn't here when the ordinance was passed, so I didn't know that part. And then. That Wabash power. Did you guys, Wabash Valley Power, did you guys have a chance to look at all that stuff she sent you?
I did. You guys did.
I do.
So. Is she asking for damages, or is she asking for?
No, she's not asking you for anything.
I know that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But is she asking in relation to the damages that were done to the crops?
Yeah, because they installed.
Right.
Hold or.
Because part of what she sent was just the agreement with the county.
Yeah.
For the laydown yard. But I don't think that's really what she's asking for, she just sent that as a document. I think she's just asking for reimbursement for.
Yeah, the lease ends at the end of May. And she's just wanting to know if she should pay the crop damages. Go through you guys first or set directly to the farmers?
I personally think straight to farm.
That's usually like them pipelines, I've had dealt with that, and they send it to me or, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So.
She's not asking for, you know, the money for the laydown yard, she's just asking for the crop damages, that's how I read it.
Yeah, that's it.
So if it's just crop damages, I think that should go to the farmer.
Yes, yeah.
Should we make a motion for them?
Yeah.
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that uh any funds to be recovered for crop damage go directly to the farmer.
Second.
And a motion in a second, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then, the planning commission. Sent down, they said their, she said their attorney drew this up, but this is all it says. Addendum to the Stark County Plan Commission, Rule of Procedure, Rule three point six. Members of the Plan Commission can participate by electronic means, subject to rule conditions in accordance with rules. Set out in ordinance twenty twenty five. And that's all it says, and she said her, their attorney wrote it up.
Was that where you can vote?
Like if they're on Zoom, they can actually vote and participate.
Didn't think that we approved that. For some reason, I didn't think we approved that in the plan commission.
I'm just telling you what Mary told me. When she brought it down.
That's right, and Justin, we can't vote while we're on Zoom, right?
Generally speaking, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Uh.
One of the commissioners on Zoom, were we allowed to vote?
Ooh, honestly, that was written before me, and we've not had to really deal with that issue, so the state statute allows you to, if you have a resolution that says that you can. But I'm not sure if you guys passed that resolution around COVID time that allowed you to vote.
There was something.
I thought we did.
There was something. We passed to do during COVID.
I'm all right with it, but I mean, if we can't do it, we don't want our board, you know what I mean?
This is awfully vague anyway, I would say let's table this.
Yeah.
Was that our accounting factor?
I think that's. We don't have one with the lower.
Okay, so the only other thing is to wait on the total response.
Can we cover any other business?
That you can do any other business?
I don't have anything.
I don't either. Had a day off.
Have a good week. So do you want to make a motion to approve the contract? And then you could just sign it when she gets here, I mean, I don't know, it's up to you guys.
I would make that motion, yeah.
I mean, it's, the council already agreed. I think we were just waiting for Justin to confirm that in council, so I'd second that motion.
We had a motion in a second, all's in favor.
Michaeline, you did say that was coming out of jail seat.
Yes, absolutely, well, that's where I did the appropriation.
Justin, we can sign that outside of the public meeting, is that correct, since we approved it?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Good.
All's in favor, aye?
Aye. Thanks for coming, I'll single file on the way out.
Wonder how soon she'll be there, because. Close the door and.
Yeah, yeah. She was printing it out, so she could.
Uh, not yet.
Not yet, please.